Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a special agenda to run concurrent with the regular council meeting. It has two items, so the item on the consent calendar will be added to the regular agenda as item 5.11, and the closed session item will be added as 9.3.
We have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosper.
Aye.
Councilman Schindler.
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez. Mayor Horn.
Okay, we're gonna move on to this next section. We've got two different items tonight. The first one's gonna be for the awards presentations, appointments, or proclamations. If I could please have Oscar up here. I have a certificate. Okay, now it's working. I'm sure most of you guys have heard, Oscar, our mascot, actually won an award, a national award. So on behalf of the city, this is a certificate of recognition awarded to Oscar. The city of Colinga is proud to present a certificate to Oscar of the Colinga High School Horn Toes in special recognition of being named the 2024 Best High School Mascot in the Nation. Okay, now this is, this is the part that most of the city staff is kinda dreading. But... Marissa? Okay, I'm presenting her with the key to the city, along with the plaque, and this is what it states. It says, "Thank you, Marissa Trejo. It has been a pleasure working with you. Your departure will be greatly felt by all. Your leadership and guidance have brought great success to the city of Colinga, and you will never be forgotten. Thank you for being the life of our team, a great teammate, and an even better friend." So Marissa's been with the city for eighteen years now. And I believe she started out as our HR and eventually moved into city manager. And with her guidance and everything she's done with the staff, and all the past councils and the current councils as well, she has got Colinga to where we're continually moving forward, in every move that we do. So without her guiding all of us and actually teaching us, because she actually teaches the entire council. Every question is always answered at any time of the day. Without that, we would have a harder time getting things done for the citizens of Colinga. So, there's, there's a, there's a little more. So a lot of the events and stuff, I've been on council now for just over three and a half years, and a lot of the conferences that we have gone to, she, she's not only the friend and, and the boss, but she's also like the, the mother of the group. Everything we do, she, she makes our attainderies for us, so everything is planned, so we're never sitting. We're constantly on the move, and without her being able to do that, we wouldn't have been able to bring in some of the businesses that are actually coming in. We wouldn't have been able to get some of the employees that we've got and the staff that we have. We have a really good, great staff right now. And with her being here, all these years has got us to where we are. And Sean's got some big shoes to fill. So at this time, is there anyone else that would like to say something and get a picture first? Would anybody like to speak? Employees?
Good evening, everybody. Well, this is Bitter. I think I've been awhile, she's been here like two years longer than me, but when I first got here, Marissa was in HR. Helped me through everything. I always went to her with whatever questions, real knowledgeable. She's like family. I know when I was the deputy president, we'd always talk and stuff like that. She would help me out, you know, I grew, I learned a lot from her, she doesn't know, but I did. And my other partner, Alex Ross. But mainly her too. And it's hard to see her go, and I found out. But, like Mayor said, Sean, you got some big shoes to fill. And I'm gonna miss you. I know everybody else is gonna miss you. This is all you're gonna be at home here, and I expect to see you around sometimes, come into my office here. So, but thank you for everything. You'll be missed. I'm gonna give you a handshake and a hug.
Would anyone else like to speak? Chief, please.
You have a paper, you have something written?
Yes. Because I'm not gonna be able to get through with it if I don't, okay? All right. Why am I the only one up here? Why is nobody else coming up here? Marissa. Marissa, thank you. Thank you for believing in me four years ago, even at a time when I didn't believe in myself. I didn't believe I can do this job, and was fearful about leaving the security of my previous employer. Your persistence paid off. You took a chance on me, and it was the best thing I could have done for my career. Thank you. Thank you for your support. I had a vision for the direction of the department, and you fully supported me and my ideas. I don't think there was a single thing that I came to you with that you shot down. You may not have agreed, or not sure we could do it, but you never said no immediately. You always said, "Show me. Show me how this would work, how we can afford it, how it would benefit the department, city, or community." So thank you. Thank you for your guidance and leadership. Whether you believe it or not, you guided me, showed me, instructed me on so many new things in my career, from hiring to discipline, to managing people, to managing budgets. Your patience and leadership to not just tell me how to do it, but let me learn to make mistakes on my own are greatly appreciated. I feel that I'm a better leader myself because of it, so thank you. Lastly, and most importantly, thank you for being a friend and an ear to talk to. I will miss our talks. Whether it was about work or life, I always learned something new leaving your office. I feel that those moments help me grow more as a leader and a man than anything else in this job. So thank you. I wish you the best in your next adventure. I'm gonna miss you, but I'm happy to know you're not going far away, since now I'm a resident of Lamore. Knowing you and knowing your leadership, I'm excited to see what you're gonna bring to that city. Good luck and God bless.
Okay, so... We got here in 2004, and we hated it here. I'm so mad at Justin for bringing me here. So mad. And then someone helped me through the process to become what I always wanted to do, and you were right there the whole time. And you have literally touched the lives of every one of the children I have, and every bit of all of their journeys. And I'm so grateful for you, and you are gonna be so missed, just by our clan, but by everybody. And just how much light you bring to all of us. So, thank you for everything.
Any other officers? Anybody else?
I'm probably the only one here that's pissed at you right now. When I came on with the chamber, you were really the one that kept telling me that I could do it. And anytime anybody, whether they leave a job, they move on, they pass away, whatever, they always wished that they left something in a better position than when they got there. There's nobody that can say you haven't done that. People wanna comment that, oh, they don't care, they don't live here. They don't care, they don't live here. There's not a person in this room that won't say that you don't care because you don't live here. You give more than most of the people who live here give to this community. And I'll never spend another sales text on Lamore, that's for sure. But I do want you to know, you know, that probably makes him pop a shun now, I don't know where he went. But you will absolutely be missed, and I wish you well. Thank you.
I'm next. Sorry about that, Sean. Well, I wanna start off for one thing, just saying to my boss, thank you for giving me an opportunity. It's really huge. The two and a half years I've been here, I've learned a lot, especially a lot about HR. And I've been in law enforcement for over forty years, and I've learned a lot from you since then. But I remember my meeting with you, first meeting about expectations and, and the team concept of working with all departments for the police department to do that, along with, you know, just building that customer service was a priority for you. And I preach that all the time. I know when I send emails to my officers, I start off with Team Colinga, because we are one team. And I want all my employees and all staff to know that we are one team in the city of Colinga. And it's, we have grown tremendously. All the successes we've had in the police department, two years of reduction of crime, the staffing levels have increased, the new technologies of over two million dollars with the grants, the building technologies of having cameras out there. I mean, this is because of your support and leadership. And I just want you to know that, yeah, you're leaving to Lamore and, and, you know, Lamore is, I said, they're getting a great city manager. But it's, you're gonna be missed, and you're leaving, this police department is a better police department, and definitely, we still have a lot to learn and still build upon, but I tell you right now, it's because of you where we're at, and we have a safer community, so thank you.
You know, I'm really comfortable up here talking. This is like my comfort zone during these meetings, and it's probably the hardest thing for me. As we go back eighteen years, I've been here seventeen and some change. You were the first person that I actually met at City Hall, submitting my application, and I still to this day remember greeting you at that door and you walking me back to HR. It's been a great ride. We've had really good times, we've experienced some very interesting and difficult times through our tenure here, and it's, I've, I've learned so much from you during this, this time I've been here. When you took over as city manager, I feel like, and I can speak on behalf of all the department heads, that we all wanna be a rock star for you. You, you let us do what we do best, and it got the best, I think you got the best out of us. And with your leadership qualities and just your charismatic attitude and how you just love on people, and you care about every single person here and in this community. And again, I resonate what Scott said in terms of, you know, it doesn't matter if you live here or not. You, just from conversations we had, you love this community, you did everything for this community. You're an amazing public servant, and Lamore is so lucky to have you. And this caught me by surprise, and we all got caught by surprise. And was I prepared to hear that? No, but, you know, I, I am going to do the best job possible, knowing I have big shoes to fill, and knowing what you've done to turn this city around and the morale at City Hall. I know I have a tough job in that sense to, to live up to that, and that's my goal. So thank you so much. I'm gonna miss you, and it's been such a pleasure working with you, and we'll continue to talk on that. Thank you, Marissa.
Mary?
I really wasn't going to say anything, but Marissa took mercy on me. She's pissy, we all know that. She's busy, she's commuting. She found out I was in this rehab center because I'd broken my leg, not for drugs or anything, with a bunch of blue-haired people, and the food was just absolutely hideous. She brought me food. She went out and she brought me a meal to eat. You brought me some milk too, didn't you? Yeah, she just really, I mean, I had nothing to do with her job, I mean, she's just a great lady. And I'm so glad that you've been a part of my life. Thank you very much. You really put a good example out there. Your family's very lucky to have you. And we were too, all this time. I don't know Sean.
I told you, I got gutsy.
I know, but you're gonna cry, I'm gonna cry.
That's my goal. Hi, if you guys don't know me, I'm Cora Sappo, make sure. Okay. All right. I've worked directly under Marissa. She's been my supervisor since 2016, and I came in knowing nothing about HR, and I probably still don't know anything about HR. But I wanted to publicly say thank you, because if you know Marissa, she's all about family. She's all about the kids. She's all about us mothers being present. And my journey, my journey in a motherhood hasn't been easy. And through my struggles and everything else, Marissa has been one of the biggest supporters. And, um, just thank you. Because you know how much I wanted to be a mother. You've been there, you're so kind and compassionate, and now my son has got a city hall grandpa, you know? And I just wanted to say thank you, because you've done so much, you've extended kindness and love to me. But my little family, who's here today, right there, has been able to benefit from it, and I'm gonna miss you. So City Hall will never be the same, sorry, Sean. Will never be the same. Will never ever ever be the same without you. It's gonna be really awkward on Monday with you not being here, knowing that you're not gonna come back to your office, and Sean's gonna be there. It's gonna be weird. But I know, I, I apologize, and actually, I shouldn't apologize. You all that are gonna be next to Sean is gonna know what I've had to deal with for a long time. He's loud, you're loud. It's not about Sean, it's about Marissa. But anyways. Lamore is so blessed to have you or going to have you, like we are. And I sure hope that Lamore can learn, the city of Lamore can learn their facial expressions and what they mean. And that they know that when Marissa asks something, they only have five minutes to respond. I'm gonna miss you, thank you.
Okay, now council? Oh, one more.
My thing, the financial services director. I'm probably the most inverted director that Marissa probably have here. I don't say much, I don't talk much, but what's great about Marissa is that it doesn't matter. It's just, you know, come in, do what you need to do, and get the job done, because that's who we are as public servants. And she allowed me to do that. She gave me the opportunity to not just prove myself, but prove that I can actually do something that I never had plans for. And she was able to do that. I don't know how she did it, but she did it, and I'm here. And so I thank you. I thank you for everything that you've done for my almost two years here. And I've seen myself grow so much more than I ever did in two, almost two years period of time here at Colinga. And so if I'm not talking or don't say anything, doesn't mean I don't like you, it's just I'm just not very talkative. And so please forgive me for that. And thank you so much for believing in me.
All right, so I'm really not used to being on this side of the podium, I'm usually facing that direction, but, you know, I first met Marissa my first term on council, 2015, 16. She was HR. We had water problems in the city. We had financial problems in the city. We had just let a city manager go. We went out to looking for new city managers, and we couldn't find anyone that was, was what we could all agree on. And Marissa had the trust of the council and the trust of the community. And so even though she was in HR, we felt that trust was important. And that trust today still shows in what she's done for this community. You know, we were 4.1 million in the hole, the city was, had to make really tough decisions, and Marissa didn't bail. She stayed there, she stayed strong through the tough times. When we did the cannabis, not everyone was happy. We trusted her to, to follow through and to try and, you know, live with the decisions that we were all making to try and make this a better place with the limited funds that we had. And then after we earned the money, and after we got the Measure J passed, and through the thick and thin, she's been able to keep that budget like right there. And I know this is, this kinda sounds like, you know, I'm talking about her as an asset, because she is, she's a very valuable asset to the city of Colinga. And Lamore is very lucky to have her, and they better listen to her. That's my fears here, because, you know, when she, when she came city manager here, you know, we listened to what she had to say, and we backed her up, and she backed us up, and that's an important thing, and that trust created this that we're in right now, and she's led the way. And I've had the benefit of being able to, you know, vent to her, throw ideas back at her, have her tell me when I'm completely out of mind, like, hey, you just can't say those things, you just can't do those things. And I've grown because of it. And so I just wanna really thank you for all that you've done for our community. And even though she lives in Lamore, she has done everything for Colinga. We've, we've called her at midnight, and she answers the phone, you know, and she's like, what, what are we doing, you know? So I really appreciate that. You've gained the trust of this community, you've trained the trust of multiple councils, and you've gained my trust for sure, and I look at you as a friend, and, you know... wherever you go, you're gonna do great things, so I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Everybody, if you can't know me, I'm Manny Ramirez, we're council members. But where to start? When I started, I started a board director for the parking wreck and that's when I first met Marissa. I didn't know if I was gonna continue in situations like this and when I met Marissa, I saw something in her that was worth fighting for this town. I grew up in this town for a lot of years, I might see familiar faces growing up when in school. There's one thing that I saw in her face, in her expression that was family. And I'm gonna tell you one thing, when you go to the League of Cities, these conventions, it's her that they look at because of the way she is. We've gone to Las Vegas and been there as a little small town against these cities that have millions of people. Her presentation was one of the best ones that we had in Vegas. Out of everybody, out of cities, out of millions of groups. CEOs will come to our booth because of her. And behind the curtains, I don't know how, I don't know how her office is clean. And not full of boxes filling over, because when I come in there, it's like everything's organized. And I don't need, does she put up these, you know, national events? These events out in the plaza and she has a family. And then she's talking about going to a soccer game in Santa Barbara. How does she do it? I don't know. That's one thing that I wanna learn from her. You see all these firefighters, all these law enforcement, it has to do with her. She has taught me a lot and she has taught me how to fight in this town. And this is why I went back for my reelection. This is why I wanna fight for this town because I wanna make a difference like she, like Marissa taught me. She taught me how to grow up, she taught me how to be professional, she taught a lot of us how to be professional. And she didn't teach me ass, no, she taught me as Emily, she taught me as a family member. And this is why I wanna fight for this town, she's the reason. She's the first one to ever get me to karaoke. As you all know, and I, trust me, if you wanna, you think two cats fighting sounds bad, you should hear me karaoke. So, but that's little things like that that made these companies and retail developers look at us. Is because the push, the, just the go getting attitude, the culture that she has and she brings to this, she brings to this town. And no matter what you run in a city, I'll line up for your karaoke anytime. Thank you so much and I'm gonna miss you.
So, I've probably been here at least a month of all the council members and this is way out of my depth. This is something that I kinda stepped outside of my boundaries to try out. She was a very welcome face and she, she made something that was super difficult for me much easier and she continues to do that every time. And I thank you for that, that means a lot to me. My wife loves her too.
No, sorry. I'd walk over there, but I had knee surgery, so it'd take me a while. I've been on the council for a little over a year and a half now, met her six months prior to that, doing the paperwork. What I've learned about her, she's a great leader. Her leadership skills are probably some of the best I've been around in my life. My career, I've been around a lot of bosses, a lot of supervisors, but not too many can say they're a leader. Leaders taking information from everybody, they make decisions and choices. Sometimes it's not popular, but they're always, they're always there to take your information, they're there to hear you. They listen and the way she is and how she does that makes everybody comfortable. And a good leader lets you be a better person by doing that. And you start to be able to come up with better ideas yourself to help your, whatever endeavor you're in, wherever you're at, whatever job you're in. And I appreciate that and that's helped me out a lot, being on the council, something I never thought I'd do as well. But I appreciate it, you're, you're, you're an awesome person, I consider you a good friend and I hate to see you go, I think it's BS. But, uh... They are, LAMOR's getting something, getting something good, so I'm happy for you.
Hey, would you like to say something, Marissa?
So staff had a luncheon today and everybody kept trying to get me to talk and I said that every time I felt like I was gonna cry, I was able to stop it and so I didn't wanna talk because then I felt like I wouldn't be able to stop. So I just wanna say thank you for taking a chance on me when I wasn't ready to be a city manager. I didn't think I was, I did it because I felt like it was in the best interest of the employees because we had constant turnover of city managers at the time and I felt like Kalinka needed stability. And so I've been serving as the city manager for the last nine years and I loved it and I couldn't imagine doing anything different, but it's really because of the staff here and the community and the council and the way that everybody comes together and works together for the best interest of the city. And so it has been a great experience and it was a very difficult decision for me to decide to go to LAMOR because I do love Kalinka. But if you follow LAMOR, you know that they have some issues right now and I feel like me leaving, I'm leaving Kalinka in a good place and there's a capable team here to continue moving Kalinka forward and LAMOR really needs help. And so both communities that I care about win and that was really my deciding factor. And so I will still be here, I am staying on as a city ambassador, which is a volunteer position so that I can still help with things in the city. And my heart will always be in Kalinka, I do love it here, I love the people and that's what makes it hard is because the job's the job, but the people is what makes it hard to leave, so thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take about a 15 minute break so we can get some pictures.
Picture of all city employees up there with Marissa and Igo. Can you guys wait, wait? And I want everybody to round off, for one picture, I promise we'll be past. Oscar, you can be in it.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting. Our next item is citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdictions of the council. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record however they will not be read. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any items? Council? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and move on to... Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mary.
It's larger than the one that they did in 2018, I think in 2018 they did 60.
Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings tonight, we have two items. The first one is consideration of conditional use permit application 24-05 and further adopting resolution number 4227 with conditions to reestablish the legal nonconforming status of the structure located at 358 East Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Tonight, this is an item that was brought before the council back in 2020. The property on 358 East Polk Street, if you're familiar, is an old dilapidated home. The property is currently zoned as mixed use and typically once it's been zoned commercial, if it's been vacant and not reestablished as a residence, it falls under the commercial designation requiring a commercial use. Section 9-6.210 of the planning and zoning code, a nonconforming use may be resumed, reestablished, reopened, or replaced after it's been abandoned or vacated for a period of six months except as provided in that particular section. The nonconforming use of a legally established structure may be reestablished if the city council approves a conditional use permit. The structure located at 358 East Polk was damaged, beyond repair, and so as a result, the property was posted by the building official as unsafe to occupy quite a few years ago and it would either need to be repaired or demolished and/or rebuilt. And so the applicant is requesting to rebuild the existing structure with additional square footage and then in addition to that adding an additional dwelling unit to the property. So when adopting resolution number 4227, staffs included conditions of approval in order to facilitate the appropriate demo and reconstruction of the legal nonconforming structure and the construction of the new ADU. In addition to ensuring compliance with the standards for legal nonconforming structures, staffs also included conditions to facilitate compliance with property maintenance concerns that currently exist on the property such as stored trailers and C-train containers. So all the conditions have been included in the attached resolution. So with that, I won't go into any more detail, but with that, this is a public hearing, mayor. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this hearing. What would council like to do?
So I have a couple questions. So this project was originally started a while back and then, if I'm correct, and then it didn't move forward and so now the applicant is asking for... Is this a new... is this a new application or is this an extension?
It's a new application. Yeah, because in order to have an extension, it has to be requested within the timeframe required under either the conditions or within the one-year period that's established normally under a conditional use permit by default.
And how long does this CUP...
So this one, it states that all conditions must be completed in occupancy or use. The land may take place in one year of the effective approval, but the applicant may request an extension from the city as the city community development department for up to two years. So it allows some flexibility if they do in fact need a little more time to either complete it or start it.
So my only concern is that we're not going to have a blighted area with deconstructed, you know, stuff on the property for a long period of time. You know, like once the demo starts, you know, I'm hoping that it moves right along. That way we don't have a demo area coming right into town and then we're going to get people asking us what's going on. They won't know the difference of, hey, is this fire property? Did something happen there? Or, hey, I just know we're going to get... you know, people are going to ask questions. You know, so I'm just curious, is there kind of an ETA or any information given by the applicant of how soon this may occur?
I don't, the applicant is in the audience, although we may need to make sure how much he's... in terms of speaking English, I know that I've talked to him, I'm not sure if he's able to speak English or not. But the applicant is in the audience. What, what? Yeah, if we could.
Does the applicant mind answering? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind asking him, what is the timeframe?
It's the gentleman in the back.
What's his name?
Sorry, I have the application.
No más diga su nombre y el domicilio y dónde vive, por favor.
Sí, mi nombre es Paulino Carmona y mi domicilio es 314 East Valley Street.
Este, nos vamos a hacer unas preguntas de la resolución que tiene aquí o la aplicación que trajo.
Está bien.
So the question was, how long does he think before he'll start and how long from the time he starts to when he finishes? And then the concern is just that we don't want to have a demo project laying right for a long period of time.
Que quería ser el miembro del council, que cuál es el tiempo que va a tomar para cuando empieza la reconstrucción de la propiedad a cuando termine, por la razón que no queremos que la comunidad cuando pase por ahí tenga preguntas de que si se quemó la casa o no más estábamos abandonada.
Yo pienso que tal vez cinco o seis meses más o menos promedio.
Dijo seis, cinco a seis meses?
Cinco o seis meses tan...
Si podía, si podría, si pasara el tiempo... Sean, if he passed between the five and six months that he was saying, that's the time period of the control. Okay, no más queríamos saber que si podía venir, que va a durar más.
Volver a venir? Sí, o sea, si... Si no terminaría en ese tiempo, pues volvería a venir.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying that. If he was to... or he was going to get behind, I'm saying that. If he was going to meet that date, then he'll come back and ask for more or extra details.
Yeah, no, like I said, my only concern is just to make sure that we don't have... You know, projects can take a while and that's fine, we just want to make sure because if something's demoed on the main thoroughfare in town, then people ask us questions and we just want to know what to tell them, that's all.
Sí, porque lo que está diciendo el council que es más diferente... Sí, porque lo que está diciendo el consejo, que es más diferente cuando, cuando está una propiedad así en calles que son principales al como que, como si fuera en otra calle, que no es principal, donde la gente pasa, you know, para atrás, para adelante. Lo que quería no más saber es cuándo es el tiempo para sí, si la comunidad está haciendo preguntas de la propiedad, qué es lo que va a pasar con la propiedad, o qué es lo que está haciendo.
Sí, sí. Está bien.
Era, era todo. Gracias, gracias.
Gracias.
Any more councils, any more questions?
So, I just want to make one comment. I am definitely in favor of this project because it's going to, it's going to repair an area of town that is blighted right now. And so, this is a very good project that I would definitely support. And so, I appreciate him putting in the time and effort to do this.
Más una cosa, lo que está diciendo el consejo, es que él sí está a favor a lo que está haciendo usted, que es una buena idea porque es una propiedad que estaba abandonada y que estamos en soporte de la condición.
Okay, I think we're on the same page. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to actually reestablish as it's written.
I'll second it.
Let me get roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Potemmer Harris?
Sí.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Bosberg?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Adopt general plan amendment, adopting Fresno multi-jurisdictional housing element twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one.
Thank you. Mayor and council, tonight, there's two actions. Staff is recommending adoption of resolution four-two-two-eight, which is adopt a finding for a common sense exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, as well as adopting a resolution recommending the city council approve a general plan amendment to replace the current Fresno County multi-jurisdictional housing element from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three with the new Fresno multi-jurisdictional housing element twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one, including appendix one B, which is basically the City of Colinga's housing element section. California housing law requires every jurisdiction to prepare and adopt a housing element as part of its general plan. State housing element requirements are framed in the California Government Code. The law requires the State Department of Housing and Community Development administer the law by reviewing housing elements for compliance with state law and by reporting its written findings to jurisdictions. Although state law allows local governments to decide when to adopt their general plans, state housing element law mandates the housing element be updated every eight years and certified by the state. All other elements in our general plan are basically adopted by the city council, not necessarily by the state. But state housing law requires the housing element within the general plan is approved by the state. The housing element must include identification and analysis of existing and projected local housing needs, identification of resources and constraints, goals, policies, and implementation programs for the rehabilitation, maintenance, improvement, and development of housing for all economic segments of the population. The Fresno County multi-jurisdictional housing element represents a regional effort made up of fifteen Fresno County jurisdictions, including unincorporated Fresno County, in collaboration with the Fresno County Council of Governments. The Planning Commission conducted a notice public hearing on July ninth to consider the draft housing element and recommended approval to the city council. Planning Commission conducted the public hearing and approved their resolution zero-two-four P dash zero-zero-five. We have been working with Placeworks, that's the consultant that was hired by the Fresno Council of Governments within the joint, a group of the fifteen cities and the county. And I have Cynthia Walsh, I think she is on Zoom, who will be doing a brief presentation to go through the housing element components. And then, if there's any questions from the council, myself or Cynthia will be able to answer those questions for you guys.
Okay, before she gets started, I would, Mayor Potemmer would like to say something on the last item real quick.
Señor, sí, sí pasó la provisión de su propiedad, so sí puede, va a poder hacer lo que, lo que tenía que tener. Si no tiene ningún preguntas, entonces ya estamos listos. Okay? So sí pasó, y todos ya está bien. Okay?
Okay.
Right. So, I think Cynthia should be on?
I am. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great. Sean, am I being able to see the group? There it is. All right, good evening, Cynthia Walsh, Placeworks. I will just jump right in here. As Sean mentioned, this is going to be just a short presentation on the Colinga housing element, touching on the revisions that we've made through this process. Next slide, please. So, quick agenda, we have an overview, kind of an overview of the outreach that was completed. We'll touch on the regional housing needs allocation and how the city is meeting the arena. We'll go over some of the comments received from H C D, the environmental review that was completed, the schedule moving forward, and our recommendation. So, as Sean gave you a little bit of a summary, I'm going to kind of do the same, so a little bit of a wrap here. The housing element is one of the mandated elements of the general plan, and it does need to be updated every eight years. This cycle, the sixth cycle, runs from December twenty-twenty-three to December twenty-thirty-one. The previous cycle was twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-three. And this document does need to plan for your fair share of the regional housing needs allocation. Next slide. So, your document is unique, and I do have a review piece of this because it was done on a multi-jurisdictional level. So, you have a regional housing element, and then you have your local appendix or your local housing element. So, this is kind of an interesting and, like I said, a unique way of doing this because things do make sense to do, you know, certain goals and policies on a regional level. So, we do have regional goals, we have regional outreach that was done, we have the housing needs assessment, which is the data-heavy section of the document, and that does include all of the jurisdictions within Fresno County, including Colinga. We have a regional assessment of fair housing. We look at opportunities for development on a regional level, constraints, and goals and policies. And then, we get into the local housing element. You have your city-specific action plan, your site inventory, which really just looks at what is currently available for development within the city. We have a local assessment of fair housing, housing constraints specific to Colinga. We did a review of your previous housing element programs. So, where was, what was the implementation status of those programs? And then, your local outreach and engagement. Next slide. So, this is the summary of the outreach that was done. You can see these started this quite a while ago, August twenty-twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-two. We did stakeholder consultations. And this is our one-on-one interviews with local agencies to really get an understanding of the needs of the community. We wondered that public meetings, we don't get a lot of input, so we go right to the source of the agencies that gather the data and see those individuals on a much more frequent basis. We had a joint Planning Commission Council meeting to introduce the housing element process back in September twenty-twenty-two. We had a local workshop on the housing element in October twenty-twenty-two. And then, we had a few regional stakeholder focus groups in October, November of twenty-twenty-two, and then also in April of twenty-twenty-three. We had a Planning Commission study session on the draft in May twenty-twenty-three. This was prior to submitting the draft to H C D for review. And then, we had a city council study session to do the same on June first. Next slide. So, looking at the regional housing needs allocation, this is really the driving factor of the housing element. How are you going to plan for housing? And this shows you Colinga's allocation compared to all of the other jurisdictions within Fresno County, including the unincorporated. So, you can see, Colinga has a arena of five hundred and sixty-six units, which is just one percent of the overall allocation. Next slide. So, this breaks down that arena into the four different income categories that the state wants you to look at. So, you have very low, we have one hundred and fifty-seven units to plan for, your low income, ninety-six units, moderate income is eighty-nine, and above moderate is two hundred and twenty-four, for that total of five hundred and sixty-six. You can see in the next column, this is just an inventory of what is currently on the ground in the city available for development. I should note that it is not the city's responsibility to build these units, to develop these units. It's just your responsibility to have the land at very density if the developer wants to come in and build the units. So, you can also see that we have projected A D Us. This is looking at accessory dwelling units and the potential there. And then, you have the total capacity. So, we have a total of four hundred and eight for your very low-low, also some lower sometimes. Your moderate, we have a hundred and twenty-minute total capacity, and two hundred and twenty for your above moderate. And then, the far right column shows you your unit surplus. And it's also good to have a little bit of a buffer built in. So, if projects come in and the need aren't coming at the affordability that we have allocated here, you have a little bit of a little room there, so you're not constantly looking for additional sites. Next slide. So, this has been our process with H C D, our California Housing and Community Development Department. So, we first submitted the draft back in June twenty-twenty-three. We received a comment letter from them, which included finding where we needed to revise the document. That was in October. They had a ninety-day review period there. The second initial to H C D was a sixty-day review period, and that was in November twenty-twenty-three. We received another comment letter from them on January twenty-twenty-four. So, we submitted one additional time on March twenty-twenty-four. And with this round, we were able to address all of the state's comments, and we received a conditional compliance letter. And a conditional compliance letter is what everyone strives to get. It means this document will be approved once it is adopted and resubmitted for certification. So, we don't make any modifications. The draft that we reviewed is in compliance with all state requirements. Next slide. I apologize, this slide should have gone before that one. This is just looking at the different parcels that we are relying on, that inventory of sites. These are the sites, and I apologize for the small map. There is another in the housing element. And online, you probably can zoom in a little bit larger. This just shows the available parcels, vacant parcels within the city. Next slide. So, we'll go over the revisions just kind of quickly that were made to address H C D's comments through those three rounds of review. So, public participation, they wanted us to expand our discussion on how the comments that we received from the public, how we considered those and incorporated them into the document. Also, with the review of previous, this is a session where we're looking at the progress that was made towards this cycle progress. They just wanted us to include additional analysis on what was done there. Next slide. Looking at the housing needs assessment, they wanted a summary of the population growth, employment, enrollment of a variety of housing type. So, as I mentioned, we have a regional document that has all of this data in it, but they wanted a summary included in the local housing element. So, we included that data as a summary there. We also included additional analysis on extremely low-income households. Extremely low is if you're making thirty percent less than the area of the income. For the housing constraints, they wanted us to include additional discussion on emergency shelters and their proximity to services. Analysis was added regarding single-room occupancy units and the progress of development there. Text was added for regarding minor exemptions and exempted projects in the permit processing procedures. And we clarified the city's design review process and the C U P process. Next slide. For the fair housing analysis, they wanted us to add additional information on patterns of need in areas of higher concentrated, first experiencing homelessness and including access to transportation services. Text was also included to include that knowledge for all fair housing aspects. For the site analysis, we adjusted our realistic capacity. The realistic capacity being we take our A bridge, we take the maximum density, we multiply it by two, but what really gets developed. So, they wanted us to look at sample projects of what is it, an eighty percent realistic capacity. It says it's seventy-five, that's developing. Once we've considered development standards and setbacks, things like that. So, we revised that there based off of example projects. Text was added to address existing uses and demonstrate the potential redevelopment. And we have some under the lightsight, non-vacant properties that we're looking at. So, just demonstrating how we see those developing. And then, discussion has added our ready-made water supply. Next slide. So, we also made revisions to certain programs. Program three, we revised to include the outreach to connect homeless community members to existing resources. Program six, we added to identify candidate sites for for housing projects and conduct outreach to local developers, so really connecting the developers with the properties that are available. Program seven, A regarding farmer housing, this was to identify potential funding need opportunities that may need be available and provide information on the city's website regarding rehabilitation with residential programs. Next slide. For program ten, this was added to create a plan of action when high-risk properties are identified that are on the verge of losing affordability. So, what are the steps the city will assist with there? And then, revised to partner with the Valley Area District to conduct outreach related to grants for residents. Next slide. We also received information from the public, so we included a program to establish and put the list of local labor unions and apprenticeship programs. On the city's website, we encourage developers and contractors to hire local labor. For zoning amendments, we included text to update the definition of emergency shelter to remind state law that that changed during the drafting of this document. So, there was a new definition of emergency shelter. And then, revised to amend to allow smaller lot sizes in varying zones within the city. Next slide. I won't redo all of these, but these all have to do with fair housing. Fair housing came around in eighteen sixty-six, a brand-new section in the document. This is like a document, housing, pardon me. So, we expanded place-based strategies that are going to be implemented with local labor programs and improve the access to resources. And then, we included geographic targeting and by time. So, where the city, we really use these programs already, that's the geographic targeting there. Next slide. So, a part of the housing element and then our environmental assessment was prepared, and it was determined that I found that it is exempt from U N R C subject to the following exemptions, common sense feasibility planning, and health allocation. Next slide. So, here's our project schedule. We had our Planning Commission meeting to recommend adoption on July ninth for here this evening, looking for adoption this evening. And our next step will be to submit to H C D, as I mentioned, for an additional six-day certification review. Sometimes that review is less than six days, but the last few months they've been taking their sweet time, and they're using all of those days, so. Uh, next slide. So, here is a recommendation for this evening. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council conduct a notice public hearing and adopt a resolution which finds that adoption of the housing element is exempt from U N R C subject to the following exemptions, and adopts the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one Colinga housing element, and the Fresno County multi-jurisdictional twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one housing element. And that's the recommendation that I have available for first impressions.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public if the public has any questions. Seeing that there's none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, council. Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, I didn't see anything in there relating to the cost of the project. Does it cost the city anything? And if so, is it a state-funded kind of thing, or who pays that?
So, the development of the plan?
Yeah, well, all of it.
Yeah, so, development of the plan is paid for by the city. I think, because it's gone over three, almost a three-year process, I think it was almost a hundred thousand dollars for this plan. We have, we went the multi-jurisdictional route the previous cycle because it was a substantial change in, in difference in cost. Even this year, this next cycle, which was eight years later, was substantially higher than the previous, even through the multi-jurisdictional element. And we would have been doing it on our own, it would have cost, I, probably double. And so, they've got, they've, they've been increasing in cost to prepare these documents because of the additional back and forth with the state. And basically, with all the adoption of these new housing regulations, it's made these documents bigger and bigger and bigger. Similar to like general plans, and similar to environmental documents, they just seem to get bigger and bigger with more regulation that's required to be in these documents. And so, but I think, I'd have to look back, and I can confirm it, but I think it was close to probably a hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted over about a two fiscal year period.
And that's the cost to the city, no reimbursements, anything?
No reimbursements, no.
So just so I'm clear, this is a state mandated program that costs the citizens of Colinga a hundred thousand dollars? How does it benefit them?
Well, basically the housing element is another element of our general plan. Um, it typically, if the city were to prepare these documents, they'd be a little more simple in terms of, but what the state's put forward is significant housing regulations, housing laws to ensure that the cities are planning for future housing. So you can see that five hundred and sixty six number, that's a number that the city has to plan for. We are not in the business of building the housing, but we have to make it available, which means having proper, properties properly zoned to accommodate different levels of housing based on the different populations in the city. And so basically it just requires, and so I, I don't feel that our, our city has that problem in providing equitable housing throughout the community.
We would normally do anyway, correct?
I mean. But it's a one size fits all sometimes and unfortunately we were mandated to prepare these documents and these are very in-depth documents. Um, and so that's really where the cost gets high and these aren't things that can be prepared by staff at all. Um, and so basically it's just, it's a tool for us to, to guide housing, to ensure that we have programs, to ensure that we have the sites suitable for new housing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Yeah, so I've went over a lot of this, uh, reading in my own time and then also listening to this. And I don't see a lot of information on here about single family homes. Like, I mean, we seem to have a lot of people that want single family homes, but in that presentation, it was all about affordable housing, high density housing. What do we have for single family people that want to move in? We have a lot of people that, you know, want to live here from the school district and they come here. Um, I believe even our chief had, was looking for a house and couldn't find single family housing. It seems like the state's whole focus um is on, you know, high densities, ADUs, multifamily. You know, I mean, is that what the city's going to turn into? Because a lot of people are looking for single family homes.
You want me to answer that?
Yeah, I do.
Um, we are, we're definitely in a position to provide and build single family homes. Um, the, yes, the housing element is definitely geared towards um affordability, affordable housing, alternative housing options. Um, single family is primarily market driven, so is affordable housing. You still have to have affordable housing developers coming in, wanting to build. Um, but those are the, those are always the tougher ones to sell sometimes. Not always necessarily here, but it is in a lot of other jurisdictions where it's challenging, projects are denied. And so the state has taken that kind of role to make, ensure that communities are planning for it and basically ensure that there's, it's spread out among the state in terms of where this housing is. Um, but no, I think in terms of single house, single family housing, we're, we're prepared. We have land that's zoned for it. Most affordable housing comes in high density because it pencils out. Um, it's very difficult for affordable projects because they're subsidized for single family type developments. Um, and so that's why you see like the above moderates in that list in comparison to the map. It's mostly the residential, single family residential estate properties. Um, single family is more equated to the more of the moderate, above moderate, where then you look at the high density. Because of the density requirements the state has on affordability, it triggers it to be, have to be in your high density, more your apartment style duplex style uh housing.
Well, I remember when Sandalwood came in, you know, that was a, a plan that had, you know, affordable housing for single family homes. And it just seems like when, the more projects that you put in that the state is helping to fund with the carb and, you know, a lot of your gas tax money is going to pay for affordable housing, that the developers, they eat that up because they're like, hey, this is money in my pocket. You know, they're going to get subsidies and that diverts the resources from trying to build single family homes. And so like I haven't seen single family homes been built here in Colanga in a while. And do we have any plans for single family homes? And the only reason I'm asking this is because I, I know that the state is doing their job on the affordable side and I know we need affordable housing too, I'm not against affordable housing, but I just want to make sure someone's going to bat for the other side, for the people that are coming here that, that need, uh, you know, single family homes. Because as far as I know, the, the inventory is very slim. I see people all the time that say, hey, I wanted to, I wanted to move to Colanga, but I can't even find a house, not even for rent.
Well, the planning commission just approved a tentative subdivision map off of Merced, um, in Chardonnay for forty six homes. And they're looking to build and hopefully have homes for sale by June of next year. Um, we are in preliminary stages of a master plan on the north end of town. That'll include, that's anticipated to include a mixture of uses from single family, high density, as well as mixed use. Or not mixed use, but um, like medium density uh housing. And so that's kind of in the early stages, there's no formal application, but there's, there's definitely some back and forth with uh the development community and the city in terms of a larger development there, which is more of a long-term phased out type master plan. So there is, we've seen challenges, uh, you know, as we know, Colinga is a very affordable place to live. Housing prices are lower. And when you have, it's difficult when you have developers that can build in Fresno, they can build in Hanford, hopefully not in Lemoore. And uh, um, but all kidding aside, they can, they can get more for the home in those communities and it costs the same to build. And so that's, that's where we come in and try to do whatever we can to make it affordable for them to come and build, put down those roadblocks and entice these developers to come in and, you know, come in and invest in Colinga.
Yes, because I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I mean, with Councilman Bosberg, because I've been hearing a lot, like these new apartments that were built, a majority of the percentage of Terraglen and Pleasant, Pleasant Valley went over there. So you have, not only are you, you know, because I've dealt with a lot of the crime guy live on Glen, you're now moving into somewhere else and stuff. And with developments like that, they're not giving, where you got applicants applying, but they can't live there because they make ten dollars more, they make a hundred dollars more and they're just, these people are just moving from the old to the new, the old to the new, it's going in circles, which, you know, I think we need to go in the right direction of single family homes because it's, with this, I thought we, we were going to get new people from out of town or anything, or get, or get an idea or get a chance for other people to live in Colinga. And when I hear these people from the state hospital, they were applying to these, these apartments, they're not getting it. They're the people from Terraglen and um, Sanlu, Sanlu, I mean, Westwoods are, are gaining these apartments and it's.
And that's the challenge because these are affordable apartments, uh, they range in, you know, the income levels. But trying to build a market rate apartment complex is very challenging in any market, especially in Colinga because of what you have to charge per apartment. I think the last market rate apartments that were built were out on um, Juniper Ridge. And there was some townhomes and then there was also the apartments that were built there. And I've talked to developers and trying to find ways, now affordable housing developers build affordable housing, that's what they do. And so it's trying to find other developers to build multifamily at market rate. Um, and then it's kind of like building single family homes. It's very, it's, it's a very similar challenge that they have trying to build single family homes as they do multifamily homes at a market rate. Because the only reason why they're able to even build these nice apartments and they're affordable is the, the tremendous subsidies that they get from the state. These off, these projects operate at a zero profit for several years. And so, you know, developers make money off, you know, their initial cut at the beginning of the project, but then they, they pretty much operate at a zero net for up to fifteen years plus.
Yes, because you get something like Coliseum B, I mean, New Coliseum B has a waiting system, it's first come, first served, but I mean, they're getting rented out and those aren't low, low income. Maybe we went that direction.
It's finding people to come and invest and that's really the challenge is finding folks that are willing to invest because they, they have to use private equity, they have to be, they don't, they can't utilize the state and federal funds. Because when you pull in those funds, the strings come with it. So it's, it's difficult to get a diversification of housing. And single family is very challenging right now in Colinga and we've talked to a lot of developers and trying to bring them in. Um, we've got some interest in the school farm properties and potentially we get people inquiring about it and looking at ways to, you know, do a master plan, but, you know, make it small chunks to absorb a certain amount of homes per year. So we know the demand's there and we're, and we do as much as we can to sell these projects, but they may, ultimately they have to make that financial commitment.
So is this part of the mass, this is going to be part of the master plan, the housing plan is part of the master plan?
Not really.
No? So I remember during the budget process, we were going to budget half a million for something, was it, was it the housing plan or the?
So when we were doing ARPA funds, we were talking about doing the, the half million for the, it was a general plan update.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Just trying to figure out where all the funding sources are, so this is funded directly by the taxpayers.
This was, yeah, this was a general fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
I think that was only every eight years.
Alright.
And as long as the government's giving money to these builders to build these low income, they're not going to be building regular homes because they can make extra money out of our taxes.
Any more questions, council?
Uh, I just, I guess I just want to make a statement that, you know, I, I don't think any of us are against affordable, affordable housing. I just think we want to make sure that we have a balance, that's all. I mean, you know, I know we, we want a place for everyone to live, you know, and I know a lot of people can't afford to live right now and that's tough and that's hard. And so those places that come in that will do affordable housing helps. Um, but, you know, the state doesn't seem to see a balance. And so that's just, I think that's the point here, so.
Any more questions? What would council like to do?
I'll move to uh, to adopt the multi jurisdictional housing element twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one.
I'll second it. Need a roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman Bosberg, excuse me.
Aye, under duress.
Mayor Proton Ramirez?
Same, aye.
Okay, that's the end of our public hearings, thank you if you're still online. Okay, uh, we'll move on to consent calendar, we have eleven items, are there any items that council would like to pull? Or discuss?
Yeah, I have a, yeah, a little list, but don't worry, it won't be long though. Yeah, no, um, I want to pull uh, five point two, five point three, five point four and five point ten.
Any other items, council? Okay, we'll move on to the first one, uh, item five point two, Councilman Bosberg.
Um, I just wanted this to be read for the benefit of the public.
So currently here is a list of items that are funded by uh, Measure J. So we have all police and fire reserve positions, four full-time police officer positions, all three full-time battalion chief positions, the one and only full-time animal control officer position, all four full-time groundskeeper positions, the one and only full-time code enforcement officer position, the contract with give me love for animal shelter services, paying fair wages to employees that includes the cost of living adjustments that we've given them since Measure J has been in place and then one-time projects such as completing an animal shelter and the Ramsey Park splash pad.
I just wanted it to be read, I don't know if any other council member has anything.
And pretty much we lose all that if we don't pass Measure J.
We lose in future.
In the future, yeah.
Yes, and those items that are currently funded by all of those positions.
Any more, any more questions to it?
Uh, I don't know what, if I can even ask this or not, but um, currently when we plan the budget, we look five years out and, and consider that when you start your budgeting.
We do not look five years out, at least I don't, but I'm sure that um, it is taken into considerations when the department heads are looking at their budgets.
Right.
So it's, it's tough to do because some numbers, um, we don't get until we're working on the budget. So like the Calipers numbers with our unfunded liability and the employer rates for Calipers, we usually get those around May each year. And those going to affect July first, our health insurance renewals, um, we get like the end of May. Um, our sales tax, um, and transient occupancy tax reports that we get from HDL. Um, that's why revenue projections are done last, we usually get those towards the end of May. So it's hard to project five years out when we're dependent on a lot of the information being provided from outside agencies that we have no control over.
Okay, e- even the Measure J fund stuff you don't consider?
Uh, Measure J, yes, so that's why in that staff report, it states in there that if Measure J doesn't renew, that council or city staff and council should consider looking at um, reducing costs leading up to twenty twenty nine when the tax is going to sunset because you can't wait until twenty twenty nine and then cut everything all at once because you have to wind it down. Um, what a lot of people don't realize is it, uh, private sector employers pay into unemployment insurance. As a city, we self-fund it, so we pay dollar for dollar for every unemployment claim that is filed. And so if we have a massive layoff all at once, like we did when Claremont Custody Center closed, that was a large expense because we're paying dollar for dollar for all of those claims. And so this um, wind down needs to happen prior to twenty twenty nine.
Okay, so it's safe to say that we could potentially be starting cuts next year?
That would be my recommendation to you on my last day here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item five point three, Councilman Bosberg.
So, um, again, this was just for the public information and then also if any other council person wanted to speak on this.
Thank you, so this item on the agenda provides an update on the status of what's going on with the passing of K nine nitro. Um, when nitro passed, the chief did reach out to Fresno County Sheriff's Office to start a criminal investigation, so that is ongoing. Once they are done, they are the lead, they're the ones doing the investigation, so it's going to be up to them what they choose to release to the public. Um, and then once that investigation is completed, then a administrative investigation will be done and that's being done by an outside investigator and that will be a confidential personnel matter and that report will go to uh, the commander and the chief of the police department. So if there is wrongdoing, it will be addressed, but I know that the public may not be happy because they may want some specific details that they may not have access to just because it's a confidential personnel matter.
So, has the council been briefed on, on what happened and what the results are?
No, because it's a confidential personnel matter.
Right, so I just, we want everyone to know that, that we aren't being told anything. Yeah, because I keep getting asked and I'm like, we are in the dark on this, we do not know what's going on either.
So what we've been told pretty much is that we'll probably never find out. It's, it's, because it's completely confidential, it's out of our hands. It's up to the departments to take care of it. It's, it's, because it's completely confidential. It's out of our hands. It's up to the departments to take care of it. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Five point four, Councilman Bosberg.
So I only wanted to pull this because um, I'd like to make a suggestion that uh. Upon approval from this, we also add in uh, that we work on the, uh, including uh, these easements uh, to the rest of the areas. That earn the same boat as the people on um, uh, on this APN because I believe we, we have some, some others. Is that correct, Sean?
Yeah, we, we went through this probably over about a year ago, um, in the same neighborhood. There, it's just based on how right away is established and the standard, the minimum standard for right away. It creates this two-foot difference, two, three feet difference between like existing fence line in the back of the sidewalk. And since we don't have any regulation that prevents fences to be built on property lines or right behind sidewalks. Property owners have wanted to, you know, expand their, their backyards a little bit or move that fence line because it's difficult to maintain. And technically it's right away. So it's not ultimately always the owner's responsibility because it's a city right away like a street or a sidewalk. So um. We've been, we've had these requests and so I know Nate and I have talked about looking at other areas where we can, because then we've had some continuity too in some of these areas. I know there's some areas in uh, St. Anne Springs and also. In uh, Fox Hollow that have some of these issues. Whether or not it's right away or not, we'll have to investigate that to see. Um, but I usually converse with the city attorney, not city attorney, city engineer to verify where that right away is. So it can be different in different areas, but we will, we can definitely look at other areas that can. Take care of this and do it all and do one, another process like we're doing now. Because we'll be, we'll be back for another public hearing on this one. Because this, this action tonight sets a public hearing for the vacancy or the, you know, vacation of that uh, right away.
So can we add that caveat to this to um. With the, with passing of this, can we also add the caveat that we look into others or is that something we need to be a special, uh, separate agenda item?
Yeah, we'll probably just do that separate.
Yeah, we're, we're setting the date, so I would not be able to get other documents together to, to actually go through the hearing process. I can pretty soon get you back some information on other locations, but the formal documents with the legal descriptions and exhibits. Those will take a little time to complete, but we can look at trying to identify those locations, but the public hearing will be specific to this particular property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then our last one is uh, item five point ten, Councilman Bosberg.
So this one, um, I just had, I just wanted some, I guess a little bit of clarification. Uh. I was asked by a citizen, um. If we put in this report about um. And I guess, I don't know how to really address this, but the complaint is with the legal fireworks. That a lot of times uh, people are feeling like they're reporting illegal firework activity. Um, and that. They don't know if it's actually making it into the, the, does that go into the report? How do you guys uh, notice about this? Um. What do you, what's the procedure on this? I, I guess that people would feel like that they just want to have some kind of um, accountability for themselves. So they understand that. When they report it, that it's actually, you know, being dealt with.
It's not going to be on this report. This is a uniform crime report with those specific categories of crime. Uh, but calls for service, we do capture uh, if we respond to a illegal fireworks incident.
And so would that be in this report or no?
No.
No? Okay. Alright.
Any more questions, counsel? Okay, we'll move on. What would council like to do with the consent calendar? We have a motion?
I move to approve uh, the consent calendar with the addition of five eleven.
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Councilman Bosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye, vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number six. Uh, discussion, we have two items tonight. Discussion, direction and potential action regarding amending title five. Of the Klingon municipal code by adding sections relating to unsafe camping and public hazards. Marissa.
Thank you. This item is on the agenda just for council to be able to provide direction. Um, it is kind of lengthy, so hopefully you've had a chance to review it. It was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Bosberg. And so the uh, item is attached. If you'd like to make any changes. The plan would be to bring it back to you um, for a first reading of the ordinance at the next meeting. And so we just wanted feedback from the council if you had any changes that you'd like to see. Otherwise, it will come back pretty much as written at the next meeting.
I have one question. On the storage of people's junk that gets taken in for sixty days. Are we charging them to store it? Can we charge them to store it? And the reason I ask is because everybody wants to figure out a way to get some for nothing. So if we're not charging for stores, somebody could just abandon something. Per se, that they need to put somewhere, city has to store for sixty days and they get free storage. And we don't want, we don't want to become somebody's rental store yard. So how do we mitigate that?
So abandoned property is different than confiscated property. Aban, if we think it's abandoned, we don't have to store it at all.
Right, but if on there it says un, property that's been left. So somebody could leave their property on, you know, these spots. And I'm just asking that question.
Yeah, if it's abandoned, um, and the officer, for example, believes it's just, it's just laying out there and it's been there for a while and nobody's around. Uh, in that case, we should just clean it up and not store it. That would be my, my recommendation.
Do we add that in there in saying that if it appears abandoned, we can just junk it at the time? So we don't become responsible to store people's stuff?
Yeah, if the council wants me to look at it, I can do that. You guys don't need to do that. I can, I can look at it and make that modification.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put the city in mind having to. Build a place to store stuff.
Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and bring that one back. Next meeting I believe. Uh, so we'll move on to the next, the next item, discussion and direction and potential action regarding updating the council rules and procedures to include a process. To fill vacancies on the council. Marissa.
Thank you. So this item was requested as a future agenda item by uh, Councilman Bosberg and our city attorney has updated that section. And so. He can answer any questions. If you have questions about it, it is added there in the code of conduct.
So I appreciate all the work that the city attorney has done on this. Um. I've read over it. I think it's uh, good. Um, talks about our appointments. Uh, that we have a list of uh, all regular ongoing uh, boards, commissions and committees. Um, and talks about, you know, the list shall contain the following information. Um, a list of appointed terms which will expire during the next calendar year with an incumbent and, you know. And then a list of the boards, of the positions, the local appointment list shall be made available for the public. Um, and then it talks about special vacancy notices. Uh. And so I guess uh, what I. What I really wanted to um. To do is have a clear path for a section. I mean, like this is great, but if we could add in something specifically like for uh. When someone, um, when we have a vacancy on the planning commission. That we know exactly what we're going to do that way. That if we have a situation to where, you know, like we had before that we could say, hey, we're going to have a, a, a one-month window. And you know, basically if you don't apply within that one month, then unfortunately you're not going to get a shot. That way we don't have situations where we have people that come later and want to get in and then the council is stuck saying to ourselves, okay, well. You know, you're a great applicant, but somebody else did it on time. And so if we had a clear path on what to do. That would immediately solve that situation. We would know. Yeah, so, but I want to set the exact time. So like if we could set like, um. So the portion that says the application for the vacancy shall submit a completed application to the city clerk by the deadline posted. I'd like to set that deadline. So if we could set it, if the council would agree to maybe a month. Or even, uh, it could be two weeks, whatever it is for planning commission, we could do it for a month.
I think thirty days is better because we did it, I believe, for two weeks and it wasn't quite enough time. So I think, I think thirty days, up to thirty days.
And then the other harder one, um, which may take some options by the city attorney is what happens when we have a council person resign. And what I want is uh, some clear guidelines so that we can understand as a council, like if it's before a certain date. Then we have, then we make a decision. What is the outcomes of the decision? I mean, the current vote that we had, you know, maybe Councilman Atkinson would have waited a little bit longer to resign. If he would have known that, hey, him resigning would have allowed uh, uh, Councilman Schindler to not have to go through the process, you know, again, after we appoint. And so if we could put that information down and maybe you could bring back some options for us. That way we could understand it. So that way that if anyone is going to resign, that they can resign in fashion. So that it doesn't make a situation to where we don't, where we're stuck saying to ourselves, okay, what are we going to do?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. So the council appointments are all set essentially by law and how, how that's laid out. So I can add that in. Um, is the council also wanting? Um, I, I would call this more like procedural type of language. Is the council also wanting like a description of how you're going to pick the person? Like are, are the, you know, asking them to come up, asking them to have a presentation for the council? Do you want that in here at all?
If you could give us some options, I think that'd be great.
Okay, I can do that.
That's for the city council or planning commission board?
I think if we did it.
I think the, the, the city council one's a little bit different. We gotta kind of go off some of California state law, but they tell us along with the Brown Act. If we don't, we get in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think I, my question is, I will include what is the requirement, you know, the timeline for replacing a council person. But um, my question to the council is, okay, once we set that and if the council says we're going to appoint.
Yeah.
Either a council person or a, a commission member, do you want me to include options that kind of lay out the procedure once you're in the council meeting of how the selection process will go?
So that way we would know, hey, like we, we have a vacant position. We're going to put it out for a certain amount of days for people. So that now we, now it's not like, okay, well, what does council want to do, right? We could appoint someone immediately. No, we could take, that way we, I mean, we could do that. We could, that's a decision we could decide to make. But I think for the transparency of the public, um, and to, for continuity, we could make it to where, okay, this position's going to be floated out for however many days the law states we have to, but plus. You know, let's say we said thirty days. And then when the people come here and they have their applications turned in for those positions that we do give, we say, okay, we each, each person will be given. You know, ten minutes to be able to talk about themselves, uh, and give us an idea. That way that, um, because a lot of times, I mean, I've seen this in the last twelve years where. We just gotta kind of make this stuff up as it goes sometimes. And it'd just be easier if we agreed on, because it could be changed. I mean, if we decide something and we put it in code of conduct, if we wanted to change it, we always could. But at least it would give us some kind of pathway.
So with, with what Councilman Bosberg just said, I, I put this as an item a couple of years ago. Uh, so that is, it's pretty much required every February, even after an election, once the new council comes in. They can go over this, so that if there's any changes or anything that needs to be explained to the new council, we can do it at that time. And then to also be able to have the option to bring it back anytime during the year to modify it if we needed to. And which is what we're doing. Scott.
Sorry, Scott meditated. Question. For the planning commission, those kind, I understand the thirty, sixty day, they'd submit applications. Uh, but when it comes to city council. Can something be considered where if they ran for office, like, lack better example, Miss America, if she can't fulfill her duties, it falls to the runner-up. If somebody else already went through that process and people voted and they took, and they were second, where this last time. Just anybody that could be submitting the application and it seemed like we're then not, but they didn't want to go through the process of being on the ballot. Getting the votes and being, you know, is there a way that it could possibly, I don't know legally if you can in the Brown Act, where if two or three people on it. Can it go to the runner-up rather than having to go through that whole?
That's, that's pretty much what we did last, this last term. The only reason we're doing this is because, like for instance, this year, I'm not sure if it's like happened before, but we have. Three councilmen that are running for reelection and they're all running unopposed. So that's, that's where we're trying to fix this because if one of us decides in a year that we want to get off, we gotta start the process. We have to have someone, some way, some process to appoint somebody. Because there is nobody else.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. I'm just saying like, and when it came up to Councilman Schindler, that just seemed kind of odd to me as he's in my district. And, you know, he had to go through that whole process again, yet somebody else at the last minute just had to fill out some forms and get approved obviously. And then it was still up to the council to vote. It just seemed like it should, it should go off with the voters had the opportunity to vote because. They went to candidates night, people had the opportunity to ask them questions. And granted, they should, you know, you gave them that opportunity here that day as well in council. But how many people come here and actually participate in that and, and talk about, and ask questions? So that's just my thing. It just seemed like the runner-up. And if they're not interested, if they're the third person, you know, at least they went through the process and took the time, the initiative to put themselves out there. I think they should get first dibs basically on this. So.
So Mario, is there any way that we can? Is there, we had to do it this way and we have to do it every two years because of it. Is there a way, uh, or a law or some way that we can get around that? Or do we have, or a certain timeline and after that it hasn't mattered?
Right, so um, they're kind of related questions, but to answer Scott's question, there's not a way that you could say automatically that the runner-up gets it. Because the council options by law are you can appoint somebody. Um, and then the appointment process is kind of up to the council. So that's why, why I say it's kind of related. So the council wants to say, hey. We're going to go with the second runner-up or whoever. They could do that. Um, the other way is, which rarely happens, is a council could call for a special election. And generally that doesn't happen because of the cost. Uh, and then there's other provisions about when the person resigns, how, how long they go and when they would have to run again. Uh, so could we make it automatic? No, but that's certainly an option for the council if they decide to appoint. To say, we're just going to go with, you know, the, the person who didn't, who didn't win.
So I, I guess I'd just like to make the point that um, I understand um, Scott's uh, idea a hundred percent. Um, just playing devil's advocate, let's say someone ran and got like ninety-seven percent of the vote and then someone else ran and only got three votes. And that would show me the public really didn't want that person. And we wouldn't want to automatically put that person in. Um, I understand your point. They did the work, they did everything, maybe they should be heavily looked at, but um, uh, you know, I'm. I, I'm just playing devil's advocate here that sometimes that situation could occur. Uh, and I think it, I think people have, have made that case before that, hey, like I was runner-up. But then the council was like, yeah, but you know, you didn't win.
Yeah, and there's, and there's more of a.
But I understand your point, Scott. I'm not degrading it at all. I think that that, that's a great thing and I think the council absolutely should take that into consideration. And um, like if the situation with Roger, I think we made the, the right decision doing that.
Yeah, I think, um, this is more of a political issue than a legal one, but um, as you guys know, I mean, in a community like this, there's oftentimes people that don't run that would be qualified because somebody else that's qualified is running. And so you end up with two, two candidates that would have been good and a third candidate who is not so good. But one of them doesn't, doesn't run because, you know, they think the person there is either incumbent or somebody else is running against them. And so in that case. That, that other person never gets that opportunity to be kind of in the mix if you have something that automatically goes that way. But I think that's a good, that's a choice for the council to.
Now, what about an incumbent running unopposed? Uh, that doesn't meet the deadline qualifications, even with the extension and still nobody's running. Then what? Then we're stuck with four council members at the end of the year.
Yeah, but I think, again, I think that's a, if there's a vacancy, then the council can decide that, hey, do we want to consider or give more weight to the person who came in second?
I wish there was a good way to make this, uh, go without, uh, I mean, cause I understand Scott has a great point. This is something like, you know, it, it, it's a great point. I'm not against what he's saying either. I, I think it's a good thing. I just, I look at, you know, I've seen councils before that have, uh, gotten people they, they didn't mix with and they didn't, you know, but I don't know.
Well, even with my situation, I almost didn't make the deadline. I walked in the election office with an IV in my arm because I had to release myself from the hospital. So in that case, how would that happen? Cause I would be disqualified, right? If I didn't make, if I wouldn't have made the deadline, I would have been disqualified, right? If nobody was running, how would that?
Yeah.
At the beginning of the year, right?
Yes.
But they wouldn't have to run, right? Just like, it could be like, oh, Scott, you're in.
They wouldn't have to run at that point, but they would also not get a full four year term.
So that's kind of what I want drawn out in the code of conduct so that we can all understand and the public can understand what that process is. I know that, uh, you know, you understand it and then I, I thought I understood it. I talked to you and you gave me legal terms that was a little bit different than what I understood. So, uh, if you could put that in there and give us options. Um, if you can make something that's similar to what Scott's talking about as an option, uh, for us as well, that'd be great.
And I think you guys are all doing amazing, but it's frustrating. You see everybody being and complaining on Facebook about the way they're blaming city for dogs on the street. They're blaming you for homeless in the creek. You get blamed for everything, yet nobody wants to challenge you. I understand that there's two good people and one not so good. Well, the two good ones split the vote forty, forty-two, forty-two. And the not so good gets eight. At least then you have an option for second place being a good versus, you don't let the people choose. But people not even being willing to put their name out there when they're the ones sitting on, on Facebook or out at the coffee shop complaining and complaining, complaining. And then you guys were running unopposed. Not that, I don't want you all there. I think we have a great council right now. But it's just, you know, put up or shut up, people. I mean, sorry.
I think we agree with that. Okay, is that enough, guys, for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to announcements, uh. Wait, we do have that more, right? Nope, that's it right there. Okay, uh, we have announcements, city manager's announcements.
I have none.
Council members, any announcements or reports?
Just want to say one last time, thank you, Marissa, for everything you've done for Collinga. Appreciate you.
Same thing with me. Thank you so much. Keeping the tugboat away. Keeping me away from tugboat. But, um, no, I just, uh, I want to thank all staff. Um, everybody comes into the council, um, just a little, uh, piggyback on what Scott says is true, you know? If we have something to complain in there, you know, let's, let's run or, you know, be more formal and, and professional about it. Um, thank you to Chief, um, patrolling, patrolling the streets, um, out of my district a lot, a lot of speeding. Um, I've talked to some of the officers that are now patrolling. I'm so happy, uh, school started. Um, I want to see if I, I think it is, you know, it doesn't fall future agenda. Just to, uh, piggyback on the speed bump program.
There, well, the speed bumps you requested are being ordered next week.
All right, I got one for, uh, Pine Street and Glen.
We have, we have two on Glen.
Two on Glen, uh, I think Pine Street too. Where, where I put that center divider?
Needs a bigger boulder.
Yeah, I think we need a bigger boulder. Yeah. But, um, yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Um, I just wanted to, just, just let the public know that, um, you know, you hear rumblings at different places, um, about the council and I just want to say from my personal perspective, we have a great council and we're doing a great job. We have a great city staff, a great city manager. Looking forward to, you know, Sean, um, filling, filling in and doing his thing too and seeing everything he can do. But I just want everyone to know that we got a good team here. We do. Everyone's doing things. I mean, I know I talk a lot, you know, so people I say, you know, I see you talking up there. Yeah, but it's not, I mean, we, we get things done together as a team. Everyone goes in, talks to Marissa, everyone goes in, talks to Sean. Uh, you know, we obviously can only talk to one other person about specific items, but we pick our people who we talk to. And we get things done. And I just want to make sure that the public knows that, that we have a great team and that everyone's working together, city staff, city council and the, and the public. I mean, you know, we take items from the public and bring them to here. And a lot of times people might not even realize that this item originated from someone in the public because they don't want everyone to know that, you know, they, they wanted something to, to happen. So that's our goal. We're here for the public and, uh, city treasurer, I don't want to leave her out, you know? Um, Dawn does a great job too. She fills questions. Um, she's just as much a part of the city council as everybody else is. And I know everyone ran unopposed this time and you know what? Part of me, i- i- I agree with Scott, like, hey, you know, put up or shut up. But then the other part of me says, the, the public must think we're doing a decent job. You know, because, um, you know, they're, they're willing to give their trust and I appreciate that. And then the last thing I just want to say is, um, Lamar is lucky, uh, to have Marissa and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm going to give a heck about it still. I appreciate everything you've done, Marissa, and I hope they don't mind sharing you.
Yes, go ahead.
So I just wanted to share that I recently had a phone interview with the director of American Red Cross. And they will be sending over information, um, for us to, I'm going to share it with the council. That, um, information so we will know what the resources are, timelines and frames, things of that nature. Um, this came about after the house fire and the gentleman was concerned about people not having resources. So hopefully, um, we can get those resources here at our city. So when that does happen, they can be handed out. She also shared with me that, um, there's a four week program that a person can take as a volunteer position. And we'll ac- then we'll actually have somebody here in the city that will have the resources to go in the event of a disaster. So I volunteered to educate myself and wanted to take that. So if anybody else would like to join in to get educated as far as that's concerned or get involved with this, I'd appreciate it. And I just wanted you guys to know. And one more thing, I worked with a local, um, gentleman who creates books here in town and I did this, um, over the summer. And we created a book, um, it's called Give Me Love. And I asked their permission before doing so. Um, and I talked to the school administrator to be able to go into the school this year and educate our kids as far as responsibilities, as far as animals are concerned. So that's another project I've been working on. So I just wanted everybody to be aware. And any support, I'd appreciate it if anybody wants to get involved in that also.
Anything else, Lonnie? Okay, all I know is I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually miss coming in here every day and seeing you. And asking the just most off the wall questions I'm sure you've ever heard. And I'm sure all of council and most of staff probably do the same thing. That's the one thing that I'm going to miss is coming in here and listening to you just laughing at us. Cause, cause we deserve it. Uh, we're, we're, we're definitely not gonna, we're gonna miss you, but I can tell you, we're not, we're not done yet. I, I actually go to some of the meetings in Lamar. So I still plan going to see exactly how you progress their city. Cause I know you're gonna, you're gonna hit the floor running. So that's, that's what we're all looking forward to. Okay, other than that, are there, uh, future agenda items?
Um, I just wanted to put a future agenda item up for, uh, for the easements. Uh, how would you phrase the future agenda item? And then I'll just say yes.
I just, I wrote down bring back other locations. So I, I kind of have the direction from the previous item. So.
Okay.
Just explore other items. Yeah, I think we're okay.
More future agenda items at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to closed session. We have three items tonight, as been said. Meeting is adjourned.